All right, it's five o'clock. I'd like to call to order a meeting of the Wisconsin Board of, or excuse me, Wausau Board of Education, Education Operations Committee. We'll only do this tonight. So, the first item is approval of the minutes from August 27th. Need a motion?
Some.
A second?
Second.
Do we have any discussion, any additions, changes? Hearing none. I'll call the vote. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, motion carries. The second item is the employee handbook updates. And so, let's begin going through those. There'll come a point in those updates where Lance and I being conflicted on issues having to do with spouse employment will have to leave the room. And Beth Barton, the board vice president, will take over at that point.
Well, first of all, thank you. I'd like to thank Carla McCannowitz and Tammy Ben, who are here, two specialists who work tightly with me on handbook. That is their baby. And it is an entire department and administrative team, though, that weighs in on the handbook and revisions. Couple things to bring to light. You'll see that what was approved by the board in December was expectations for maintaining confidentiality. That was approved but not put in the handbook, so that I'm trying to reflect it here as something that will be in the revised handbook. Same thing for the school safety. If you see something, say something. Recent legislation requires, just like child, not child find, just like child neglect and abuse and so on, we have an obligation as educators to report it. We now also have the obligation, if we see something that is a threat to the safety of children or schools, et cetera, that we have to report that to 911. So, this was approved by the board in April. And the third was sending information home with students, a protocol for how anybody who wants to send information home with students should proceed. That was approved also in April. The rest of the changes we are bringing forward as changes to do a couple things. They allow us to be consistent in our language as a department. They allow us to hopefully simplify things for the end user, for teachers, administrators, simplify our processes. And they take us out of the policing role and move us as a department more in the direction of personal time off as a general approach. And if you have heard that phrase before, it moves us out of the police role. And you'll see that in just a minute. At the same time, this first update, drug, alcohol, and tobacco-free workplace, this was revised because there was no reference to tobacco in this. So, we felt we do want to recognize and speak to tobacco in the workplace, tobacco use and so on. So, we broke it out into two separate handbook portions. Alcohol and drug-free workplace remains as it was. And then we added the tobacco use at the bottom of page seven. And when we talk about tobacco use, current thinking about tobacco use is what, so we had to ask the question, what do we mean by tobacco use? Is it just smoking? Is it e-cigarettes? Is it chewing tobacco? So, we tried to capture all of the current language. Any questions about that one?
I have a question.
Yes.
It's under the original part.
Yep.
That we have about distribute dispense use and be under the influence. I would like to see the word willful put between the and influence, having been myself drugged by someone else. And I don't think I should have, I was, nothing happened, but I shouldn't have been held responsible if somebody else.
I get what you're saying. I think what I would, what I would offer is that in the investigation that would ensue, if somebody's under the influence, we would make the determination whether it was willful or not.
Mm-hmm.
There would be a, I, it suggests there would be an investigation.
I just worry that because there's nothing that says there that if, say, someone gives you chocolate chip cookies, and after you've ingested them, they tell you that they're full of hash, you're kind of sunk.
Then you should leave the school that's your premises immediately because there's a policy that says you can't be on the premises.
But you're already there.
Right. But you shouldn't get punished for it. I mean, if you find something out like that, you shouldn't get punished for it.
Could it open a loophole on the other end where someone could say, I have alcoholism, it's a disease, and so it's not really a willful use of a alcoholic product? Or no, I'm just kind of thinking out loud.
Yeah.
I'm wondering if that could cut both ways.
Well, maybe, maybe we need better language. But I think if someone drugs you, it's not your fault and you shouldn't lose your job over it.
I don't read this as saying that if someone drugs you, you would lose your job over it.
Well, it says if you're doing any of these things, you can be punished or fired.
Right. But that would still require the board to approve of the termination.
Mm-hmm.
Which we certainly wouldn't have to do if we found that the person had a good reason for it or had a reasonable excuse for it.
Yeah, the board would come in on appeal. It would just be an administrative mechanism until then.
But that's a long process.
You know, the opening phrase is, "In order to protect the health, welfare, and safety of students and employees, no employee shall." And so, if we capture that line, no employee shall be under the influence, that's the intent. The intent is, we don't want employees coming into work under the influence, being at work under the influence. But if they were not willfully, if they were subject to brownies, cookies, whatever, that were laced with something and they didn't know it, I would not deem them to be in violation of this.
Well, and I think it just, it helps that we've discussed it. So, I mean, the intent has been shown. So, I can live with it the way it is.
Any other reactions to alcohol and drug abuse, or drug-free workplace, or tobacco use?
Well, just along those lines, if we're talking about illegal, or involuntary intoxication, rather, it's not just the, somebody being under duress or doing something where they are not aware what they're ingesting, but also medication. If people don't realize they're going to have a reaction to medication, that's another form of involuntary intoxication if that is the concern here.
Right. And under number two, it says illegally. So, a drug that has been prescribed to you wouldn't fit within the definition.
Okay. It's hard to tell what kind of reactions you're going to have because not when you get a new drug prescribed to you, everything is listed.
All right. If we continue on the next page, bereavement leave. We've reworked this in a couple ways.
Thanks, Lance.
All right. If, if you look at how this was originally practiced, a teacher who, a teacher, first of all, employees get either five days of bereavement or three, depending on if they're year-round calendar employees or not. And provided they work 500 or more hours annually. If the, if there's a death in the immediate family defined by what's listed there, spouse, parent, domestic partner, son, son-in-law, daughter, daughter-in-law, brother, sister, grandparent, grandchild of the employee or their spouse, that was considered immediate family, then they would have either three or five bereavement days. If it was someone outside of the immediate family, they would have one day. But what was kind of a red flag for us is they would log it as a sick day, but they weren't sick. So, we felt compelled to clean it up and move it to bereavement. So, we started talking about, so how will that work? We want to preserve employees' opportunity to take off for bereavement for the death of an individual outside the immediate family as defined here, but we don't want to log that sick day. And so, what, the way we've written this is, such employees will tap into their bereavement leave and it'll be listed as bereavement. So, they're three days or five days. They can use for death in the immediate family or death outside the immediate family. And so, the question comes up, what about a person who used all their bereavement leave and still has service that they want to attend, that kind of thing? That's where the third portion comes in. Additional bereavement leave, in extenuating circumstances, additional bereavement leave days may be granted. Request must be made in writing to the Director of Human Resources and Employee Relations or his or her designee. And finally, the fourth portion here says that in some cases, we might ask people to provide some kind of evidence that in fact, someone is deceased and it would, the services were on the day that they said they were on. One of the things this does is it cleans up that language about a teacher going into Skyward, doesn't list it as a sick day. And it also does not tap into their sick days. Sick days roll over every year. Bereavement days don't. So, we're leaving bereavement where it belongs. We're not taking anything away from the teacher. And in fact, if a teacher needed more bereavement days, there's a vehicle through which they can apply for additional bereavement days. And I can't imagine a scenario through which that would be denied unless I've seen your maternal grandmother deceased for the third time in three years. So, it's an insubstantial change to what we have been doing. The only thing that really has changed is the unilateral autonomy of the employee to take a sick day for the bereavement of someone outside the immediate family. It just requires running it through the Human Resources Department.
And how would that request be made? I mean, it says in writing, but could it be like an email with an obituary attached?
They don't even have to provide that evidence. They just have to provide an email that says, here are the circumstances. This person, and if you look on the outside the immediate family, there are also parameters for the kinds of relationships that come into play outside the immediate family. Aunts, uncles, nieces, nephews, first cousins, and so on. So, yes, in that email, they would, they would just shoot the email to the human res, to me and the Human Resources Department. If I have any questions, I would ask those questions. And in most cases, it would be approved. So, then the question becomes, what if they are out of bereavement days? Where do the new bereavement days come from? And it comes from one of two places. Either they, either we move sick days into the category of bereavement from the current year's sick day allotment into bereavement, and then they log the bereavement request, or they opt to take it without pay.
Well, I have a lot of questions about this one.
Yep.
So, bear with me.
Sure.
Nobody can afford to take a day without pay. That's just a reality.
Okay, I agree.
So, it feels like a loss to me because where you had the option of taking a sick day before and having your salary covered, now that option is taken away. And for teachers, this would be three days a year, right? That seems low to me for bereavement leave. So, if you're ever in the position where you're the one planning the funeral, you really need five days. And so, I'm not sure why the difference in the number of hours worked because you can't time that stuff based on the number of hours. You work in the district. I kind of think it should be across the board, the same for everyone. And I would like to see some bereavement leave added. I also don't like the way that it's per year. I feel like it should be per instance. I feel like this stuff doesn't happen often, but sometimes it happens a lot to one person in a year. And I don't like the fact that on top of everything else that they're stressed about and worrying about, they have to worry about sending an email to somebody to get something approved. And they're worrying about whether their salary is going to be covered. So, as long as people are using it for the purpose that it's meant for, I'd like to see us be a little bit more generous, unless, as a district, we're having problems with people abusing bereavement leave. And I'm starting to think, maybe that's why we have the proof of bereavement leave? I mean, is that necessary? Is that something that we've had a problem with in the past?
I think it's a safe, it's a safety valve for us that is prudent. It's not necessary in most cases. We do have some employees who every year use all of their bereavement. And, you know, 15 years into a career in the district, you start to wonder, just, what's the incidence of all of that?
Well, it doesn't take much to use three days.
I agree.
If you have to travel for a funeral.
Year after year, it was pretty unique.
Two days for travel, one day for funeral, that's one instance right there.
Yeah, I feel like, I wish we could, I think we should look at this. I think you're right about that. But there's still some things that I'm uncomfortable with about this.
You understand that one of the things we just did is we loosened up the number of bereavement days. So, you had three. You basically now could continue to move sick days through the HR office from your sick bank into bereavement. Physically, we would go into Skyward and move some of your sick days into bereavement. And now, you would go into Skyward yourself as the employee, and you would take your new set of bereavement days that were approved for this instance.
Why not just increase the number of bereavement days?
Because there's a cost there that we would have to look at because bereavement does not roll over.
I feel like if we feel the need to put proof of bereavement, then we have a different problem. I, you know, that's an honesty problem. And it kind of reminds me of a case in my career where we used to get 10 sick days, but you couldn't ever use any of them for your children. And we were trying to make the case that part of your sick days, you should be able to take for young children when you were at that phase of your life because they get sick. And you have to stay home. And like I said, people can't afford to lose a day of pay. And what our HR department said at that time was, well, then everybody's going to use those. And my answer was, well, what do you think they're doing right now? They're just not being honest about what they're doing. So, that got changed. And I see we have that here, too. But I just feel like that proof of bereavement, that's a way of saying, we don't really trust you as employees. And we feel the need to put this in here.
I forgot to turn my phone off.
And I, I don't like that feeling. And maybe other people disagree with me. Maybe I'm overreacting to that. But I wish we could just make it per instance. If your mother, your father, your sister, your brother, your child, your grandchild die, you get five days. And if somebody else in your, the next circle, you get three. And then, if, if there's a need for proof, that we just deal with each instance individually. If you really know that we have employees who use their bereavement leave, then I just feel like that's a different employment issue.
I think that part is, is already covered because it says that we're just reserving the right to, to ask for that proof. So, I, if.
So, it doesn't necessarily mean they will?
Doesn't we have to?
Yeah.
If we were saying we had to.
If I actually could be an unusual circumstance in which Human Resources Department would ask for that proof.
I, I would.
It would really have to be something that I got wind of that I didn't otherwise know.
I would agree that in the private sector, I mean, we have language that says that we reserve the right. I'm actually okay with this language. It doesn't mean that we're going to check every single bereavement that an employee submits. It just shares that there will be circumstances, you know, where we may be inclined to ask and request for that proof. And I just want to ask one more thing, just to step back a little bit from just conversation so far. How long has this policy been this way with the not to exceed five days? Has it been like that for like the last 10, I don't see?
A long time, but I don't, I don't have the specifics.
Okay, so it's not new then, right? Mike, it's always been this way. We're just making changes to the red lines that you have here.
Right.
Okay, three days would be for teachers. That seems low to me.
But it's always been that way.
Yeah. And I'll, I'll suggest again that what we've opened the door to here is virtually unlimited days because you can borrow days from your sick bank and have them become bereavement days.
So, Mike, the five days, the not to exceed five days and the three days for all other employees, that has always been our policy. So, people understand that for like the last five years or something.
That's a good point, Mary.
Yeah. So, are there complaints about, I guess I would ask just to, you know, follow up to Beth's comments. I mean, are, do you have staff coming back saying, oh, this is such a huge problem, please change it? It doesn't sound like.
No, we also have, and by the way, the language about you can always petition the HR office for more bereavement days is, is not new either.
Okay.
And also, remember, people have personal day each year that they could use. Personal business.
So, is petitioning to turn sick days into bereavement, bereavement leave, is that just a formality? So that your Skyward records are up to date?
Yes, largely a formality. But I mean, I would bring, I would bring some level of scrutiny to it. Frequency of requests, what are you telling me in your email? And I'm not, I'm not asking for a long narrative. It would just be, so I'm seeing a lot going on here in a, on a repeated basis. Maybe I need to ask a few more questions. But by and large, no. I'm, again, we're trying to get out of the business of being police and trying to make possible what teachers need.
And Mike, how is that clear to teachers in here that they can do that if they need to?
Yeah, I don't see it.
Where, how is that, if, if that were to come up and they, they don't think they have any days and they're just.
Additional bereavement. In extenuating circumstances, additional bereavement leave days may be granted. Request must be made in writing to the Director of Human Resources and Employee Relations.
But it doesn't explain the use of sick days being converted. It just sounds, to me, it just sounds now like you're going to get additional bereavement days and that's it. I don't want anybody to be surprised that they.
We can, we can add that language.
It doesn't sound very hopeful there. Extenuating, it, it just doesn't sound very hopeful for somebody that might need more days with the language as is, which I understand is how it always has been. But it wasn't clear to me what you explained from reading that.
Mike, can I weigh in here?
Yeah, Tammy, go ahead.
I just want to go back to what, Mary, what you said earlier. We do not tend to get complaints with people saying, I've run out, or I don't have enough, or I need more. That hasn't been our experience in the last year. We get more people who put in for bereavement leave and it's, falls into the outside of the immediate family because they don't understand right now that we give them that one day, but it doesn't come out of bereavement, it comes out of sick. And so, there's a lot of work behind the scenes to go back to the employee and say, who died? Oh, okay, it was your cousin. Well, that isn't bereavement leave, that's sick leave. And they, they seem very confused by that. So, we're basically saying, we're giving you the same amount of time that we always have. And just making that exception, if you use all of your time, talk to us. We'll, we'll come up with an alternate plan. And like I said, I know very few people that have expended all of their bereavement leave and then needed more. They've not come forward with that complaint at this point in time.
I wonder how many of them though, just, I don't have any time left, so I can't go.
It could be, it could be. We usually hear about everything else on leave time because people don't want to take off without pay, as Beth said. We haven't heard that one, but it's always a possibility.
And then I was wondering what acceptable proof is. I mean, I think we should spell it out somewhat.
Yeah, I think that would depend on what the issue was. If I see a disconnect between, I would ask for something like, you know, most, almost everybody has a funeral home site you can go to and see the deceased. You can see the date and time of things. I probably don't need much information at all. An obituary, something like that. Again, I can't right now think of a scenario in which I would do that unless there was a, some fairly strong evidence of someone deceiving us on using bereavement. And if they did that, then we've got a compounded issue because it's not just whether or not you get the leave, but it's about deceiving administration.
I think the question is, how compassionate are we going to be in HR? And if, and what I'm hearing is it's that we're looking at a compassionate approach to make it possible for people to have, have time off if they need to have bereavement. One point that was made that I really liked was that if, that, that the statement that the sick leave could be converted, I do think that should be included. But other than that, I think this is a great policy change.
What I think it does then, too, is we can track that and see, so how much use are we getting of people taking sick time, moving it over to bereavement, and using it for bereavement? We're not, again, we're not the police on this. Yeah, I don't expect to use that last, that last paragraph. I just don't expect to use it.
One concern I have about now with this proof is I hope that we would also be culturally sensitive because when you comment that a funeral homes website, maybe for a majority community, that's the case. But for instance, in my tribe, Hochunk, we have traditional funerals where maybe a funeral home will assist, but everything takes place on tribal lands. There's not going to be something on a website. So, in instances like that, you wouldn't be able to find that type of proof.
I would have to agree with you, too. Even with traditional mum funerals, I mean, if I want to start tackling the five days a year, I mean, mum funerals are, you know, they're a week in advance, and then we run Friday till Monday 24/7. And so, you can, you can burn those hours really fast. But I like the fact that there is the additional bereavement leave requests that can be initiated. And I would agree that sometimes you may not get that validation. But I understand where you're coming from, Mike. You're probably never going to use it. I can't say never. It is there for you to use your discretion as needed if you feel that the request or maybe someone's manipulating the, you know, the policy or something. So, but I agree with you.
Can we add the sentence about, to make it clear about you have the right to change your sick time into bereavement leave if you need to?
Yep, we will. I'll bring that back.
Is that a small enough change that we could approve this? Do you guys?
I would think so.
Oh, I'm fine with that.
Then I would be happy with it. Because then it's basically doing the same thing as it has in the past, but it's cleaning up the language so that your records can show what you need them to show.
Yep. Easily done.
Then I would make a motion. Or should we wait till the rest of the changes are approved all at once?
We also have sick leave and personal leave.
Okay.
Sick leave, another area where we didn't want to be the police. There were, people did not understand that they could use sick leave for medical and dental appointments. So, we added that language specifically to make it explicitly clear that you can. And that's the bottom of page eight. At the top of page nine, personal leave.
Mike, can you?
Yes.
Oh, sorry. I wasn't sure if you were going to transition right away to personal leave yet. This might be like completely off course, but it is regarding sick leave. Does that roll over every year?
Sick leave accumulates every year.
Yeah, accumulates every year and it rolls over, right? Up to?
126 days or something like that?
Hundred, probably. Twenty or a hundred, I don't.
So, you can roll over 26 days in a year if you don't use? And then, Mike?
More than that.
More than that?
I don't know what amount that rolls up to, but there's a limit.
Okay. But we can roll over. And then, just one question since this has now come up. If I'm going to retire and I have a bank of like 500 hours of sick leave, do I get that all paid out?
Yeah.
Up to a certain amount? I think we have that today where sick leave up to an amount will be paid out, but everything else will just kind of like void.
It depends on your position in the district. So, our support personnel, and Tammy, you can help me with this, you get a credit towards your health insurance payment premiums in retirement.
It's handled different for all of our different categories of employees. So, for teachers, they can carry up to a maximum of 130 days of sick leave. Teachers do not get paid their sick leave when they leave. For some of our other groups, our maintenance and custodial employees, we take their sick leave that they have in their bank and convert that to an, what they would make in a day, and they get a check for that after they retire.
For custodians and?
Maintenance and custodial employees. For, and all of this is in the handbook under the different categories for employees. Under our administrative and educational support, so the clerical type employees that work in the office, they get what we call a retirement benefit, even when they're still working, with 20 years of service and at age 57. And we take, you know, their, it's, they're basically looking at their sick bank, but they get a flat amount of money based on how many hours that they work. That's their official, what we call their retirement benefit, that they negotiated that. So, there, when they actually physically retire, their sick leave also goes away. They don't get those hours.
Oh, so that doesn't get paid out at all?
That doesn't get paid out at all. And then municipal employees, when they retire, we take their sick leave hours, again, come up with what they earn in a day, and that money can go into a health reimbursement account. That's the one group that does a health reimbursement account. So, they can pay for health insurance, they can pay for their health-related expenses after they retire. And our nutrition services. And our nutrition services, their sick leave bank also goes away. They don't have a provision for doing anything with their sick leave. So it's, depending on what category of employment, is what happens with your sick bank.
I will be following up with you and Mike outside of this meeting for Mike.
These were things that were negotiated, it's not anything new. They, this has been in place for many, many years when we were still under a contract and all of those provisions were something that they agreed on before.
Yeah, I, I received a question maybe a year ago about someone who's in that category of the clerical, about how when they retire, their sick leave will not be paid out to them. But they have concerns because every year, it's really hard for you to use those sick days because, you know, you're, you're working. And when do you have time to take some of those days off if needed for whatever criteria that falls under sick leave? So there's just some questions, but I'll take it offline. I figured since we were on the topic, I might ask. Thanks for it.
You can hear there's quite a wide range and to Carla's point, it was because different things were negotiated with different classifications.
It's nice to have an incentive though that keeps people from using their sick leave unnecessarily. Or they use it when it's sick and for doctors and?
Or those that may have perfect attendance that don't use their sick leave and it just keeps banking and so there's, I get what you mean.
You have people that use every second.
Thanks, Mike.
Personal days. We struck through, here again, not wanting to be the police. We struck through the two accumulated personal leave days may be used without a stated reason in any school year. We felt a couple of things, and by the way, the Human Resources Department used to be the ones to approve and review use of personal days, and we wanted to get out of that business because we don't need, we don't know the needs of, of each individual campus like the principals do. So we're asking principals to be given three days' notice by teachers who want to use their personal days. Some people, you, you get one personal day per year, you, you can accumulate those. Some people have accumulated quite a few. And there was language in here, and I just want to call it to your attention, that you're limited to two of those per year without a stated reason. We're not looking for the stated reason, we're, personal days are personal. So we asked the principal to negotiate the request. Is this a good time? If it's the spring of the year and you've got coaches out and you've got a high absentee rate of teachers, then maybe it's not a time when I want to be approving on a Friday a personal day. But again, that's better done by the principal than human relations, human resources. Change some of the language in that next paragraph. Personal leave is paid leave from work for reasons other than illness or vacation, taken at the employee's discretion for needs that are personal in their life. It's provided by the district to meet the needs of each individual employee. Questions on?
So don't you think that if you put that in the hands of the principals, it's true that they know the employees better, but couldn't there be an equity issue between schools where one principal is approving everything and one principal is being really kind of approving some peoples and not really applying that fairly?
I suppose that's possible. That doesn't mean we don't follow through and take a look at the frequency of personal days or the use, you know, we don't necessarily know why they're using their personal day.
And isn't the main reason to restrict it? That you wouldn't maybe have a qualified substitute available during some of those? Like every Friday and Monday in May, for example, or?
Mike, can I speak on that?
Sure.
Yes.
Yeah, it's dependent on the school size. For instance, a small elementary school would be limited to two people out per day for a personal leave. And then the next size would be three, up to five for the middle schools and high schools. So there is a limit on the amount that they can approve per day simply because of the fact that we can't overextend our staff as well.
But it doesn't really state that in this policy.
Right, that should be clear out, I think.
They're already doing that for all absences. They're looking at any absence.
Personal leave.
Yeah.
So is there a way to state it in the handbook that says there's a restriction if there isn't a suitable substitute involved? I mean, available?
Well, it, it is hard to say, you know, in a handbook that if there's a suitable substitute or not, we never know from day to day if there's a suitable substitute available.
Prearranged.
But we know how many days that they can request per school. And then, and also they have to give a three-day notice so that we have time to find somebody for them.
Wouldn't you guys, so, wouldn't you guys feel that where it's redlined, where it talks about requests based on district and student needs, that, that's really implying that they may be looking at that formula of you can only have two or three people out in a day on sick leave? I, I read, I read that very clearly, that, I mean, there's probably no specificity right there, but I think that gives the district the, the opportunity to evaluate, you know, day to day or next week, that request is for next week, to really take a look at the needs. I think it's pretty clear right there.
Certainly, there's a potential, it may not just be the number of people that are out, but maybe the kinds of activities that are taking place in the school that particular day or some other events that may be coming up. I think this just leaves the discretion there and I, I would rather see less specificity than more in this kind of a situation because I think that ties people's hands.
And empowering the principal to make that, you know, decision, I think that's great. You know, giving the building level administrator to, you know, so striking out, you know, going to the Director of HR to make the request and, I mean, it just seems like, well, it could be done.
Are you worried about favoritism, Beth? Because that would be the supervisor of the principals to make sure that that is not happening.
But there also seem to be a lot of restrictions. Like, for instance, if you say personal leave is for personal reasons and you're not going to ask about it, but yet there's restrictions that say you can't take them the week before school starts. Well, that's when you take your kids to college, you know? So a parent who's a teacher can't take one of those in-service days to get their kids moved into college?
That actually came, that actually came before us this, this week, that we had three personal leaves that were thrown out of the system in a sense or questioned because people took them during that first week before school started.
Right.
Tammy went to the principals, investigated and found that in fact, it was exactly for that reason, three, three families whose kids are going off to college and we approved them. So it's, it's not like it's solely principals. There is a follow-up and follow-through on the part of Human Resources as well to... And we didn't go to the teachers and say, "What did you do? Why'd you take personal leave here?" We went to the principals who already had the prior knowledge about it. And I, I see that as, as exactly how this would work.
But if we're telling?
But this says you can't take it then.
Yeah.
That's a restriction.
Exceptions may be granted at the discretion of the principal. And that's where the exceptions fall into it, depending on if it's a circumstances like that, we'll work with the principal about what those exceptions would be. And then that's when we have been, we've always made those exceptions.
You know, where some of this language came from is people would take off during in-service, right?
Just because they didn't want to be there?
Because they didn't want to be there, they, I, I don't know the reasons, but they also would take off on October days that are scheduled for professional development.
Oh, I see what you're saying now.
And so this is longstanding policy about the exclusions, the kinds of days that you can't take off or an early, an early summer in May. No, we need you at school in May because subs are so short in May. We've got coaches out everywhere.
So then, can you give me a little background on the exception that you can't take a personal day if you're going to be paid to do something somewhere else?
Been a lot of discussion about that. If I'm going to go consult somewhere else, can I use a personal day? I think it falls into a category that loosely is described as double dipping. I'm getting paid by the district and I'm getting paid by someone else to come and consult in their district. And the district doesn't want to take a stand that we are okay with that. That's been the history. We, we haven't taken a stand that we're okay with people going off and doing other work by using personal days and also getting paid by the district.
Okay, I, I have a similar concern to this. I'm not concerned about the, the principal role. We should trust our principals, we trust them with lots of other things in the building and this seems appropriate as well. But it's removing, and this is along the lines of, of your concern here, Beth, it's removing this without a stated reason. I think that's very concerning if we?
Where are you?
The, the first line that's removed under personal days provided, two accumulated personal leave days may be used without a stated reason. So now, now they have to justify why they want to use their personal day? That seems like it could be pretty insulting.
No, we're taking, it's the opposite.
It's the opposite, they're taking that away.
Yeah.
You don't have to state a reason.
We've asked them to state in the past and now we're not asking it.
Yeah.
But what it, what is redlined, or what is crossed out here is without a stated reason. So it reads to me like a reason wasn't, didn't have to be given before. Are you saying that it did?
It, yes, we, we did ask people to give reasons.
Maybe it's without a stated reason.
Especially in May, when they started to take our personal days off towards the end of the school, we were asking for a stated reason. Where now that's eliminating, eliminating that.
That was, that was probably what motivated our discussion as a department to begin with because I, I personally took exception with, personally, I took exception with people expecting me to tell them what I was doing with my personal day.
Right.
It's personal. Now, no one ever pressed me on it, but I never put it in the Skyward what I was using my personal day for.
Well, I think?
So this was moving in the direction of freeing this up, loosening up for teachers.
But if we're saying you can't take days, these certain days of the year off because it's just crazy, busy those days, but we, we might make an exception. So it should be, we would request that you don't ask for these days off, but if you need them, we are going to ask for a reason for these days.
Does say exception would be granted, it's just a different sentence.
But when you say you can't and then you say there's an exception, it takes a special kind of person that's going to ask for that exception.
So are you asking for us to put details in here about the timeframes where you should not?
I think, there are details in here already. I just think we should just say, we are requesting that you don't ask for these days off, but if you have an exceptional reason, let us know and we'll discuss it.
If I, not to be too picky about things, but I, I believe when you use the word "shall," that's what it's saying. If you say "will not," then there is no possible for exception. So I think that's the intent of the language. We could?
Okay.
That's a good point.
I'm seeing English teachers in the room, I might be wrong.
I just have one more thing. The last sentence, "In addition, personal leave shall not be used to attend association membership meetings or legislative rallies to engage in job actions such as picketing or demonstrating or to participate in activities designed to embarrass or discredit the district." I believe in that last part, but to your point of a personal day is personal, you really should be able to use it for whatever.
Well, that came up because of? If you, if you have a long enough memory, it was post Act 10 when there were pictures of people from the district on, I believe it was an in-service day, who had called in sick and were down in Madison.
But that's not a personal day.
Yeah.
If I want to protest in Madison and I request a personal day and I don't give you a reason, I should be able to do that.
If I'm not mistaken, there, there were people that attempted to use personal days.
Yes, that's true.
But we're only allowed so many people to take a personal day.
So it's, that specific, five years from now, that'll be so dated.
I feel like it's dated.
I do too, I'd like to see that stricken.
Yeah, I would too.
Yeah, me too.
I agree with your philosophy that a personal day is just personal and you should be able to take it for whatever you want.
For whatever reason. I like to see that in addition struck.
Yeah. Because the embarrassing the district with the Act 10 thing, it was the calling in sick and then showing.
When I read that, I knew exactly what it was referring to.
Me too.
It was a specific incident.
I wasn't hearing, I knew what it was referring to and where it was born.
Yeah. I feel like there's enough changes in this stuff that I personally would like to see the changes and bring it back a month from now so that we've got it right. Because there are people that have concerns about how this is laid out, employees that have contacted us.
And I think they should have the opportunity to see proposed changes and send emails about their concerns. Because they're the ones that are affected, this is their handbook and I think that we should give some time and some opportunity for that.
And when you explain things, it just makes perfect sense. But when I read it to begin with, it doesn't, that stuff didn't jive. It looked like a more of a restriction, whereas I don't think it is in a lot of cases. And maybe we would just have the opportunity in the next month to make it a little bit more clear so that people don't feel we're changing the game here.
And the people?
Because it does make sense, the changes make sense. And some things probably should be eliminated like that lesson.
And the people that called me could not find this information online. Aren't our meetings in our agenda and what we're talking about, isn't this all posted?
So historically, the handbook, as I understand it, has been reserved for, for board review first.
Okay.
Then if the board is comfortable with the proposed changes, then we make them available.
Okay, but that doesn't give anybody in the community a chance to?
And I'd like to hear their concerns.
Just following past practice at this point.
Yeah.
I was, I was contacted too by concerned people that saw this agenda and couldn't find the information.
I think, I, I think my thoughts, you asked what my thoughts are. My thoughts are very much what we, what you just gave voice to. Without the explanation in front of the board, dialogue between us, we can't realize what needs tweaking. And, and it belongs with the board. I, I don't believe at this point, first reading belongs with everybody in the education community. I think it belongs between administration with the recommendations and the board.
Well, that, then for the next meeting, it would?
Then the community has access because Cassie will publish this following this meeting.
Or the full board meeting.
So it, it offers that, that we have dialogue first, which I think is the appropriate place for it. And the second thing is, it offers the people who are wondering the chance through video or minutes or whatever to hear the elaboration and lessen their concern. I'm very curious how, how any employee could have been contacting board members about things that were raised here tonight when this, nobody had access to it.
That's the exact reason.
Because through the agenda, they just saw that it was on the agenda, but didn't understand what was coming.
And I think it caused unnecessary anxiety, stress, concern and looks like we're trying to change the rules of the game without giving any notice. Because there could, there could be a number of people that were?
This is how it's proceeded in the past.
Part of that, I think, is confusion around the purpose of this meeting as opposed to the purpose of the regular board meeting. And I have had some concerns in the regular board meeting that sometimes there's been, been placed for public comment and people have not been able to register and make those comments and then it's already on the agenda for a vote and, and we, I think sometimes we move quickly through some of those things. Because I do think those comments are important for, if we're putting it out in front of, in front of the public. But I do think this is part of the confusion that we're dealing with right now. It's just that people don't understand the purpose of this meeting.
I would agree with you.
Yeah, I agree.
That now they can see the dialogue in it. But I guess I don't feel that I'm ready to vote on these changes. I don't know how most of you feel.
No, I think it's pretty sizable, I think we should.
Yeah.
I think you're right.
And voting on just the personal leave or everything?
Voting on all the changes together.
Can't we vote on the ones that we do agree on?
It's not the way we're agendized.
There's no problem with us bringing it back in a month.
Okay.
I, I had some notice about the, thoughts about the first that we haven't even talked about. Just the school safety, see something, say something. Just changing the his and the her to their and they. I just think in this day and age, that looks better.
The handbook is a huge task. Getting it right, I know you guys have worked really hard.
May I ask a question? Do we want to bring this back at PRL? Typically, it came to PRL, but we missed the deadline for PRL before, so that's why it got shifted to the education.
Yes, let's do that.
So, Mike, do you think we could make those changes for the PRL meeting on October 8th?
Not with the two-month lead time. Not with the two-month lead time, or some, two-week lead time, I don't think, to, to get it to you for, for board.
By next Monday.
That's going to be next Monday, and I'm not sure we can do it in that timeframe.
We can try.
And would those changes be public? Because I think that we should have those public for a little while to allow for comments.
It will be public for a little while under normal operating procedure. We're going to get it to you by Monday as of this week. That's our new practice, but still, it doesn't get released till probably Thursday or Friday. So it's truly public for Friday, Saturday, Sunday, Friday.
Sure, okay. So would you do it to the next PRL, or would you do it to the next ed ops?
I'm, I'm looking for guidance. What do you want to do?
What do you think would be doable?
We can do our best to try and get it ready for Monday.
Let's do that.
We'll give it a shot.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
I just have to say this. Would you want to do it Monday and then full board the same Monday? Correct? I'm assuming that. Because if you didn't want to do that, there would be no motive to do it at PRL. If you're going to wait till the next month's board meeting, you know what I'm saying?
Yeah.
Oftentimes, we do PRL and then board meeting on the same night.
Right.
If you're willing to do that, it's worth trying for the next meeting. But if you're not willing to do that, and you're going to have to wait till the next board meeting, then we might as well do it at the next month.
Then we may as well just do it then.
Does that make sense?
Because what if?
Right.
We get more feedback or something from the constituents?
Would you rather wait longer?
Yes.
I, I think that would be the kind of thing.
And that takes away our motive for doing it at PRL. Unless we want to do it at PRL, because it naturally has occurred at the, that way we go to the October ops meeting, November board meeting, correct?
Mm-hmm.
Just like we were doing that one month later.
I guess I'd be happy with that. That gives us enough time. That gives you enough time.
Okay.
It's not so rushed. And I don't think our changes are anything huge, but I think it just, make it a little bit clearer.
We'll do that. Thank you.
That sounds great.
That's good.
You seeking a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Pose. Absentions? All right.